Rebecca is, the line is not here, so I'll take attendance. Anthony Amato?
Here.
Valerie Eames? Not here. Alan?
Yes.
Greg Cavan?
Here.
Rebecca is not here, Michelle?
Here.
Emily Hillard? I'm here. Jennifer?
Here.
Michael Sondre is not here. Peter Taglin?
Here.
All right, and there's a vacancy in my library. So we have a comment. Item two on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who wants to comment to the Board of Ed about the subject of tonight's meeting? If there's anyone, sir, just take the roster, please. What was your name and town?
Hey.
Yes.
It's John Von Udo, Washington. Well, my comment is related to tonight's agenda, but its real significance is more applicable to the Ag STEM proposal when it goes, finally goes to referendum. The elephant in our district, as in will be, the issue of how a majority vote is structured. The majority from each town versus a simple regional plurality. This Region 12 Board petitioned the State Board of Ed to revise one of the four conditions that they set for approval of the Ag STEM application, specifically condition number one, which was a majority of each of the Region School Districts 12, Region School Districts 12 towns, Washington, Roxbury, and Bridgewater pass it referendum for the financial support of the ASTE Center. This condition was revised, was not revised, and was deleted. Jim Hersfeld has stated that the Ag STEM will not have a significant impact on our region. Therefore, a simple plurality is all that is needed at referendum. Sound familiar? It should. Historically, this plurality condition has already been challenged, and you have to assume it will be challenged again at the new referendum. This issue has previously caused much mistrust and division in our three-town region and may now influence the referendum outcome more so than by trying to approve the project on its own merit. And someone convinced me and this region's voters that by creating a $40 million project in which this, in which potentially 260 out-of-region students will attend, and if the future enrollment projections prove to be correct, there will be more out-of-region students attending Chapag Valley High School than those from within the region by almost two to one. How does this not present a significant impact on our region? You all have to reconcile the fact that there are three towns in this region, and each one has an equal voice. Thank you.
Slide one. Yeah, I wanted to address, I forget exactly what you said, but you quoted me as saying that I said that the vote would not have a significant impact on the region. That's not what I said. I said that it was believed that it was not a fundamental, a change to the fundamental agreement, 1969 agreement, the regionalization plan. It was not a fundamental alteration of the plan because everything in the plan continued as was stated in the plan. This is in addition with regard to the high school. Certainly, it can be challenged. The ultimate arbiter is a judge, or wherever from there. I certainly hope it doesn't go there, but you might have every right to do whatever you're going to do. Is there anyone else?
I make just a comment.
Ed, please go.
Yeah, I walk over here and I tell you. The only thing is, I must be-
Sir, would you state your name and your town?
Ed Wayne Knight from Bridgewater. I must be getting old because I can't hear you guys. I sit here and either you mumble or you guys have, I guess I have trouble with the female voices, but I would appreciate if you speak out. You can hear me. I would like to hear you when I come all the way up here. That's all.
Thank you. We have a speaker system. We're trying to make it work. Is there anyone else? All right, I move on. Item three, Ag STEM, excuse me, Ag STEM and Science Lab renovations project, cross and reimbursement approved on August 31st. Presentation by Charlie Booze, the Castle Booze, Anthony Amato, Lucy Mometurbo, who presented first.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Happy to see you all. Before I go there, I just want to highlight our trophy. Yesterday, Mrs. Gallo, myself, and probably had almost 10 students, plus Mrs. Gallo's Abby and Mike, Justin, and we were in the Bridgewater Tractor Parade, and we actually won, I think, the best school float. I'm not sure, but that's what I'm telling you. So we're very, very excited, and as anything we do with the Ag Road Show, we always get a lot of positive feedback, which we did, and Bridgewater is always no side of throw parties. So thank you for inviting us, and our next parade will be in Roxbury.
On October 4th.
October 4th. So we're very excited. Tonight, I want to thank you all for coming for the special meeting, first of all, and we did this because this morning we had a meeting with the Selectmen and the Board of Finance from each town. Anthony was there as the Chair of the Ag STEM Program, and Alan was there in replacement for Curtis, who could not be there. And I didn't want them to get information and you not get information, at least on the same day. So that's why I asked to have this meeting. What we're going to do is, we're just going to go through the steps we went through today and then have a question and answer with the board. So basically, I'm not going to show the video again because we've sent it to you. It is on the website. Karen Files did a great job reworking it, and you can see it yourself. I don't think any of us here had any real questions about the program per se. We're pretty comfortable in the opportunities for our students. Charlie Booze is here. I think we also, at this table and mostly in the audience, really have a good handle on the setup and the renderings. So we're not going to go through that again, but certainly during the question and answer period, if you have questions, Charlie is here and will be happy to answer. So what we're going to do is, we're going to really go through three parts. We're going to talk a little bit about the population and the demographics of the incoming students in the Agri science, which we really use conservative numbers, and I'm going to have Mrs. Gallo speak to that. Then Mr. Geeson is going to go through, for discussion purposes, a summary of the overview, which I'll give to you for the Agri science STEM Academy, the science labs, and the site work. And he'll also go through the debt scenarios, which at this point, we're leaning towards at least a 20-year bond, and so that's what we'll focus on tonight, although in this package, it has the 10 and 15 year. And the reason we're focusing on the 20 is because that's what the Board of Finance members and the Selectmen today were most comfortable with. Then Anthony Amato will give a summary of, I guess, over 20 years, the surplus deficit from the 20-year model. So with that said, if you have handouts, I'm going to hand them to you. What I'd like to do is have us go through it and then, you know, write any questions and we'll ask them either as we go or, but that's really just for the board. It's a board discussion. Okay? So Mrs. Gallo, I'm going to let you go first, and I will give you nothing, really. I'll just pass this to everybody. This is just background information of what she's talking about.
Okay. As I said this morning to the Selectmen and Finance Board members, Mr. Amato is teaching this educator a different way to think, and that is teaching me to think as a business model. Not that I have become a business expert. Do not mean to say that at all. However, what Mr. Amato has guided me to do is to take a conservative look at the school population of our new school, our new program. What does that mean? Mr. Amato has done an extensive study of the actual students that applied to Nanowog in the past 10 years, all of the students from those sending districts. The 23 Nanowog sending districts, nine of which have signed on to become our sending districts. If you simply look at those numbers as though no one else would apply, no one else would become interested, that is how we have created our business model. And the reason for this is that taxpayers need to know what is actually there, not what we think or what we hope. However, I want to be very, very clear. There is a reason why I call this a conservative estimate, and there are three reasons behind one. First of all, this is a new program. We are adding the STEM component to the Agri science component, which is, it's new, it's very relevant, and it will create a great deal of interest in our sending towns, and we know that. So that's one reason. The second reason is that Nanowog, right now, does not do a full recruitment in order to gather students into their district because they're already turning down half of the students who apply. So they don't want to do an aggressive marketing campaign because that would simply be more students to turn down. And the third reason is, many of the students, all of the students, in the areas that will be sending their students to us, pass through Washington to get to Region 14. It will take an amount of time off of their commute, and we've all seen that parents are very concerned about the time that their students are spending on buses, or the time that it takes to get to their practices, games, all of the other things that they do. So what I tried to convey to the Selectmen is that I completely agree with this business approach that is conservative and completely reasonable, but I have every reason to be, to believe that it's a conservative approach and that there will be more students in times to come. And that's been my input into this. Do you have any questions for me? Am I supposed to ask that?
That's good. Do you want, Anthony, want to speak about your?
Yeah, what's your question? Well, I have one.
I'm sorry.
I assume you, so what we're saying is, if this program goes forward, that a recruiter, perhaps, recruitment person, that would be someone's, a part of someone's job description.
That's right. Thank you for asking that. What would happen is, a passive recruiting approach, which is what is happening in Region 14 right now, is when the Director of the program and the Principal at times goes to the school and says, "Anyone who'd like to talk to us about an Ag program, please send them to us and we'll talk to them." Okay? By state statute, every school is required to provide an assembly for all students, to introduce them to these concepts, whether it be an Agri STEM program or some of the vocational programs. Nanowog has chosen not to do that, rightfully so, because, again, they don't want to turn more students down. But what we would be doing is, I would go, counselors would go, and the Director of the new Ag STEM program would go to each and every sending town and require an assembly of all students, so that all students could hear the benefits of the Ag STEM program. Yes?
I would presume we have to have some criteria for not accepting students. In my vantage point as a board member, I could not accept every student who applied, unless I reviewed their resume to find out who they were, what their current status was. So therefore, my question would be, how is this going to be accomplished?
Again, thank you for that, that question. I'm happy to tell you, when I was in Region 14, I was a part of that selection process, and we would use that model in Region 12. What happened was, students submitted an application. That included their transcript, that included a letter of recommendation from a teacher and from a community member, that included a statement from the student about what his or her interest was in the Ag STEM fields and what experience they had in those areas, as well as, as part of that transcript, not only were there test scores, grades, and so forth, there was also attendance and behavior. All of those things are given a score by, in this case, a committee of about five people, and I was just one of them. As we scored those, the top scores were the ones that got in.
So just not anybody could, so people will ask the question, who can get in, can't get in? The door isn't just open to everyone on the trail.
That's exactly right.
They would like that they would like to be here, and I think parents would be concerned.
There's an application process for that.
Well, at the same time, we have to be very careful that we're not in any way discriminating against some children. And specifically, my issue is, then, I'm assuming that the amount of costs that we might have to allocate for kids receiving services that are identified, perhaps, you know, in many different ways, but still can come up to the standard we have for this program, they will demand and should get services, correct?
And those will be supplied by the sending district.
By the sending?
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And you need to hear that a few times. By the sending.
By the sending district. That's right. Transportation, tuition, transportation, and any of the previous costs would be supplied by the sending district.
It's a surcharge to the standard cost. So if a child needed some special service of some sort, we would develop the cost, we would put it on top of the bill, and that would be sent to the sending town.
But the services could be provided by our staff. It's just that we would bill.
It's by agreement with the sending district. That's right.
So it would likely be given by our staff, but they would be billing. Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for Kevin? Kevin, I don't need to ask you, but this is something that you're committed to.
I am completely committed to this. And what I've, what I've tried to say throughout this is that we all need to stay in our own lanes. I'm not the financial person, although I do listen to Mr. Amato closely. I'm the educator. As an educator, I can say with absolute commitment that this is what's good for kids, and it is what's good for us as educators to provide to our students. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
That's it.
Okay, so. Yeah, let's keep going, and then we'll answer questions about that. So I'm going to have Bob now, and Bob is going to go through this, and everyone in the audience has one. Certainly follow along. Bob has put this together, and Bob, the floor is yours.
Thank you for your work on this.
I did it.
Thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
It's quite all right. This is actually broken into three pieces. First part of it is a summary. The middle section is a detailed with inflation figures and how those numbers were derived. And the last section, which is in the buff color, is financial scenarios to make this work. Starting off on the first page, this is just a summary from the Castle Booze plans of each component to come up with total project costs. So you can see the square footages that we're talking about in each of these things, the site work that's going to get involved, the science room and lab that's going to be taken into account. But the key part of this whole thing is at the bottom. At the bottom, you're going to see numbers that tie out to our overall cost for this thing, $39,000, $491,000, $387,000. The state, based on the calculations and the eligible versus ineligible cost, is going to pick up 70 cents on the dollar. It's going to leave the district with 30 cents on the dollar. We've heard a lot about 80% reimbursement. The reason being is the science labs are a much lower reimbursement rate, and there's a lot of ineligible's in that, and it's detailed in their cost analysis that they did. So the net of it is, state wants to help by 70%, leaves us a local share of about 30%. The next section, which are three pages, just takes a summary look at what's contained in the yellow, very detailed pieces. You can spend a lot of time within that, and you'll see a lot of the assumptions that were made to get these numbers. The top piece is the enrollment that we expect. This ties across for the 20-year period, and it yields a student population of 226 within the Ag program, made up primarily of internal, which are Region 12 students, external, which would come to us, I believe it's a 30, 196 for 226 total. The revenue is, that, that number, revenue is fixed. What it is, is the state of Connecticut sets a rate for all of the programs throughout the state, and give you $3,200 for every single student within the program, whether it's a resident student or non-resident student. So everybody carries $3,200 with them in the door. Sending districts, that again is a set rate by the state, so every single town that sends you a student would be sending a check for $6,823, roughly about $10,000 for every person or every child in the program. Okay? The net of all of that gives us the revenue stream that you see on this, which, again, is detailed over the 20-year life. In the cost part of this, this is cost before debt, okay? This is the cost for all of the utilities based upon calculations that we did, a 13-year average of our own costs, based on the square footages that we currently have in the building. As we know, these buildings that are being proposed are much more energy efficient, and this is the starting point, and what the ultimate would be is after it's all designed, but it's a relatively solid number to go in with to look at it. Insurances were looked at because property liability obviously would go up, because we're covering more square, square footage, and I worked with Kermot to develop that number. Yeah, it's about $20,000. Another part of the utility is the telephones, and there's six lines that we expect to be in this thing to make it work, all caught up in this, and obviously, the operating costs for the program. And that covers all the educational costs, the hay, the feed, everything that goes into it. So the line you see, and it's broken out in the back section, goes across for the cost before the debt service. Subtracting one from the other, you'll see a debt revenue less those expenses before the debt, and it generates some positive numbers going across. Now we start looking at the debt. We started to do this, and we looked at three scenarios, a 20-year, a 15-year, and a 10-year, so we could get a handle on it. Again, these are only preliminary numbers because when you actually get to do the debt and you're further into the project, you know all your costs more or less towards the end. In the interim, you're doing short-term borrowing bands, the bond anticipation notes. It's factored in for the three years while we're doing the construction. Those interest costs are built in. And rather than try to ladder the debt and try to play a lot of what-ifs to smooth the debt out, we took an approach that took it, we borrowed $100,000 for 20 years, it's $50,000. Just take it and divide it. That was the simplest and easiest way, so you could see. It will lead you then to the back section, because these, these three really, these three sheets encompass the work that's involved in this yellow section here, and you can go back and find the detail that makes those summary lines up. When we get to the buff section of this, this is the financing scenarios, okay? And in these financing scenarios, the first part of this that you see is the estimates on the conceptual design for this total project, the Agri science STEM Academy, the science lab renovation, and also the site work that you're familiar with.
So everybody, what page do you want, Bob?
I'm sorry, it looks like this.
Yes, it's second page.
Right after the buff-colored page. Okay? It just separated by colors. And then what, the following page is under three scenarios, are identified in the corner on the right side. The first is the science lab renovation portion. We can handle with a level, okay? The other portion is larger, so that would encompass a bond. What we did was, we took the existing debt on the left side of this, these schedules, and tried to leverage that debt against what we need to go forward. So we're trying to level it as we go all the way down, as we add debt. So as you can see, what happens, you'll see on the extreme rate side of these schedules is the change from the debt we have currently to what we anticipate over the life of these things. They all look the same. They look like this piece of paper.
The last three pages.
Right. The only difference between these are whether we're doing the 10, the 15, or the 20.
Why don't we go to our last page, Bob? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
But this way, we're all the same, the last page of the packet, and this way, you can really look at it, because that's the one that the Selectmen and the Board of Finance most favorite at this point. 20-year bond.
So this has a six-year loan again. With the 20-year bond model, it's running an interest rate of 3.25%. And it leverages against the existing debt, and you'll see there's a bubble in the fourth year of this thing, the $516,162 where that debt comes in for the first time, and then it comes all the way down and starts to drop off again. As we get further into it, you see another drop-off as that six-year loan gets paid. You see a large decrease. The issue that would come before, the Board's finance would probably look through this, we would probably develop some other scenarios to this, once we know what the cost looks like, and may decide to ladder some debt to try to smooth it out some more, so we don't have that big bump all at one time. And that basically gets you the financing, it gets you the detail of your cost out of this, and encompasses the conservative numbers of enrollment, which isn't to the total capacity. It's what is felt is justified to drive this model at the current time, and Anthony can probably talk a little bit more about the methodology, because he spent a lot of time looking at sending districts, looking at Region 14 model of how many are turning away to develop this. So it's, it takes into account both our declining enrollment and also the enrollment of this coming back.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Bob, if I understand on this 20-year scenario, you're, during the one year where we're actually going to have a, we're actually going to have negative impact on the amount of debt service, except for one year, and that's the fourth year in.
Right.
When you have that $516,162 bump.
Right.
Since that's four years into the deal, if you, I mean theoretically, you could either, would it be possible to start covering that in previous years and spread that?
You mean build a reserve against the?
Well, not so much, I don't know about a reserve, but is it possible to make payments?
We could probably make payments into a debt service fund.
Into a debt service fund.
To address that problem later on.
Right, so if you were to put $129,000 a year into it, for four years, by the time you got there-
Budget each year that amount of money and then transfer it into a debt reserve fund.
Thank you.
Bob, just by way of review, just to be clear, the, the science labs, renovation of the science lab was roughly, what, $3.6 or so for the total project, right?
That's-
Of which a portion you put into the bond, and in the balance, you did a straight loan on, right?
Correct, because it's, it's in the, it's part of that 80% reimbursement. If you look at, again, the sheet here, what they did was try to maximize the most amount of money from the state by identifying a portion of that and pushing it into the Ag Science application, if you will, to get reimbursement for that.
Right.
So that's exactly where it is. You'll see it split into two, as you look at that renovation line.
So if we're doing the renovation in the absence of the Ag program, that renovation would probably wind up being more costly to the district because we wouldn't be able to pick up some of it at 80%?
That's correct. That's part of it, and it's also more costly to do a small project- And it's also more costly to do a small project because of the staging costs and all those things that would get factored into a bid, where somebody's bidding on this work. And that's just a, in their mind, a small piece of it. The staging costs already go in.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm just wondering why you're doing part of it with a loan instead of rolling that all into the bonds? I mean, I'm just, I'm sure there's a financial.
Uh, yeah, the actual, you see it somewhat in, the cost to do a loan is significantly less than it would be. And it's doable with on council, because it's a shorter duration. And the amount of money we're talking about, it wouldn't cost us as much money. And we would have to do as much disclosure to sell that, because it's a small amount of money.
So, it's, so you did as much as you could in the loan?
As it, right.
What's the max, I mean, is it five hundred, I forget, what's the?
No, a loan, in a, a loan in a sense where you needed to go borrow money to balance your budget, for example, there's this cap of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Where in the building project it's not.
Oh.
Okay? And you could do this kind of financing through a loan as opposed to a bond, and still by council will prove it, okay? Ultimately, new, something that we did the first time when we did the last project. And it worked very well for us because it kept our interest costs down over like a third of what it would've cost us.
If it's cheaper to do the loan and there isn't a cap, then why?
You can't do that many years of a loan.
Okay, so we can't push that up, all right.
There's a limitation.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, the conversation today with the Boards of Finance and the Selectmen, obviously, they prefer the twenty-year because we benefit by almost half a million dollars of debt service coming off period in that year. And the offset then is less. In other words, across the board, that first year, the fourth year in, we'd be paying something like a hundred and sixty, one point six million dollars in debt payment, that big bump. But it's mitigated by the fact that we have debt falling off, thank goodness. But have we done, I'm worried about, and maybe you have, frankly, we need to study this more. It's a lot of information. Thank you so much for all of that work. Have we a prototype budget so that when we hit these years, people don't go running into the streets? Because it's a new way of accounting anyway. Because it's not just our twenty-one and change million annual budget. It's going to be a colossally large number because we dealing gross. Then the grants come in to offset for debt service. Plus, we have to handle how that tuition is accounted for.
Right.
I would love to see, you know, down the road very soon, prototype budgets, what we're going to look like.
We will get to develop something along what you're talking about. This is a unique opportunity, actually, for the district. In that most times, you're building something and you don't have any way to offset it. And you don't have a long, if you have a long horizon view of this thing, it has a potential to bring revenue in and offset this thing. Typically, you're talking about a project and you're on your own. You know, there's not this ongoing revenue stream, if you will, to help mitigate your costs going forward. Your point is well-taken, because we always talk about the gross amount of money that we need. And this revenue sits out on the outside. And you, it's what we need to operate, the revenue stream is identified in the document. Nobody really wants to recognize it because it doesn't sound good. It doesn't make the number big enough.
I would suggest that if possible, we get a pro forma, a prototype budget for four years after we start, four years after that, four years after that, so we can incorporate what we think is actual income coming in to a very large extent. I would like to see that. I know it's a lot of work going out technically twenty years. And no one should hold it as absolute science. But it might be a good way for people to see how all that's going to be mitigated over time.
Anthony? So, from the meeting this morning, the towns, we need to go through essentially that exercise anyway. Because the towns need to reevaluate their bond rating, right?
And the debt capacity that comes out of that.
Correct. So, we're going to have to build that pro forma look at the total district budget, not just the impact of this project.
Right.
You know, but where we see this for the full twenty years, as difficult as that may be, but we're going to have to do it to the towns. So, it's on the agenda.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Because more information, better, because the further we get out on this, people will see this as an excellent way to go. It's as that short-term gets scary.
Yeah, and one town, there was even a discussion and a request actually made to look at a thirty-year profile of the bonds. So, yeah, yeah, I mean, there was logic being thrown around as to why that might be prudent. So, we'll look at it.
It's like a thirty-five-year mortgage.
Yeah. I think it's clear that what we want to think about right now is we could always turn a twenty-year bond into something less if things are happening to our favor, right? But it'd be hard to go the other way around, so.
Well, actually, you can't, you can't pay it down.
You could if you put calls in, but calls cost money.
Oh, okay, good, good, good.
All right. But it's a percentage that is going to drive the industry.
I mean, we're not going to fly into the financing scheme just yet, right? But we want to make sure we look at it with respect.
Good. Information is the most important thing.
Thank you. I have a question.
I may have missed something, I don't know, but what did you use as a model for the staff? This program has operational costs to run a program like this. What did you use as a model for determining?
There's a staffing chart, it's built into the detail, you'll see it. And that was developed by way of sections. Very detailed analysis of the staffing requirement. Again, there's so much detail in this, I'm going to call it the yellow sections of this book, all right? It was developed through Kim, all right? Looking at scheduling and looking at it as to the needs and how it impacts the, not only existing, but these new students coming in. And when you're trying to find the exact page, you know?
So, page one of one and two, just right in, after the yellow.
Right, it's right after the yellow. And it's about the fourth page. It looks like this.
The fourth page. Yep.
Okay, and you'll see there, so you've identified all the sections needed over the years.
Okay.
To get the thing up and running.
All right.
So, it's very detailed. It takes into account the shifting of the student existing. When they looked at it, you'll see it's split between the academic, the Ag, and the grant total. So, it was accounted for.
Any else here?
No, I have to work on it.
Okay, no, you don't?
Great.
Yeah, I have two questions, one for Kim and one for Bob. Kim, what we're looking at here is ultimately a program that's projected to two hundred and twenty-six additional students. Based on the numbers that are, and I haven't dealt with this far enough, maybe the information's already in here. But based on the numbers for the size of the classes that you've taught that give resident people, added to these, am I correct in the assumption that I've always had is that we are not, is the addition of two hundred and twenty-six people over some period of time is not going to ramp up the number of teachers? We're basically putting, for the rest of the school, for their non-Ag classes. In other words, what we're doing is we're using a surplus capacity that we have here. We're not adding, so there's no phantom addition of personnel of the basic high school portion of the school in order to cover their English classes, you know, the P E classes, whatever. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, you are correct in that. First of all, because of our declining population, the middle school will get smaller. Some of that staff will shift into the high school level. And secondly, at this time, we have classes that are not at capacity. And we will make that capacity as we add students. So, it's not an even mix. When you say we're adding two hundred and twenty-six students and there's, say, twenty students in a classroom, and you start doing the math that way, it doesn't work that way because there are shifting populations that are happening, as well as bringing ourselves to capacity, which does not require as much added staff as one might think.
Right, so if you're adding sixty-seven or so of each of the four years to it, you're not actually resulting in, the only real increase in staff are the increase in the staff of the Ag program. And that's already been accounted for in the costs.
And there's, yes, and there's some additional staff in the rest of the building. But it's not to the extent that one might imagine. All of those sixty-seven kids that come in don't go to all the same classes.
Right.
So, you don't, they're spread out, different things are happening with them. So, it's a very, it's a complicated figure, but we tried to do it as accurately and as conservatively as we could.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Bob, the other question I have for you goes back to the beginning of this thing, where you're looking at the pages one and, or two, and one of three, oh, God, this is, could you in the future please number these, one, two, three, four, five? I just can't follow these pages. But on the summary enrollment revenue and expenses, the model, debt model for twenty years, what I see here, just so I understand this, is I see a number called cumulative net revenue. It's negative for the first two years because it's actually a cumulative net outlet for the first two years. We're not getting revenue, we're laying out more than we're getting in by a hundred and change. But as you go down this list, if I compare cumulative net revenue, say, in year eight of three million six fifty-five to the twenty-year bonding costs, I want to compare cumulative to cumulative, because that's where my bonds are at that point, is that the point of what we're doing here? Or am I?
Anthony has another special feeling, like you a little bit more about how we looked at this. And maybe it's a good time to get into that a little bit?
Yeah, Greg, cumulative numbers, you're on the right, you're on the right track. Cumulative numbers are just going to just tell you when you get to the point where you recover the cost of your bond, principal and interest. So, if you follow the numbers out sometime out in year, I don't know, seventeen, eighteen, whatever, you get on a respective bond, you're going to cross where your king rev hopefully does exceed the cost of the bond. So, that's what that's telling you.
Yeah, actually, that crossover point appears to be in year, no, 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 it's more like year ten.
Well, it depends on what bond.
If you're on the twenty-year schedule, assuming the twenty-year schedule, I mean, twenty-year schedule for year nine, it's got cumulative net revenue of four million seven, and it's got bonding costs of four million four. So, I think that's the year, year nine. Because year eight, you've got cumulative revenue of three billion six and cost of three million six fifty-seven versus fifty-five, so.
Now, the way, the way the schedule is built, the cumulative bond cost is growing over time, right?
Giant.
So, when two numbers become equal, it has no meaning.
Well.
The last.
But.
Hold on, one at a time.
But when, but when the cumulative net income exceeds the cumulative bond expense, have we not reached the point where we're covering it?
Yes, but that occurs further out than our beginning report.
No, I think it's year nine. The cumulative net income is four million seven sixty-seven, and the cumulative net bond for twenty years, four million four forty-nine.
The cumulative number keeps growing because the bond is, you've got to get to the principal plus interest.
On the third page, the grand total is four million two eighty-one. That's your cumulative grand total over the life of that bond, and you want to do the fourteen million two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
But I don't understand, I mean, I guess I'm having trouble, I'm trying to understand these numbers. And if the cumulative net income exceeds the cumulative bonding costs, it seems to me we've covered the bond. I don't understand why that's in year seventeen, when there's a two million, two and a half million dollar difference in income over bond on the cumulative, the income's two and a half million more than the cumulative bonding cost. I don't understand why that's the year we finally start covering the bond, the debt service, when in fact it's consistently ahead, the net, cumulative net income is consistently ahead of the bond, cumulative bonding cost commencing with year nine.
Isn't the next year, the year after that, year after that?
Yeah, it is the next year.
If you look at page three of three, your cumulative net revenue at the very end of the twentieth year is fourteen million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand. And you need that money to cover cumulative fourteen million two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
I understand that, Bob, I understand that. What I don't understand is, what I do not understand is why, I do not understand a chart that says the cumulative net income is in excess of the cumulative bonding cost and it doesn't cover the bond. That's what I'm not getting, I'm just looking for some explanation of why in year nine, four million seven sixty-seven in income does not cover four million four hundred forty-nine in bonding cost. Am I wrong that four million four forty-nine is less than four million seven sixty-seven?
It's a moving target. The bond, the bond is principal plus interest. If the bond is ten million and you have, you know, two million in interest, the total cost of the bond is twelve million. Your cumulative revenue has to get to twelve million before you cover the bond. That's basically how the numbers work. Just because in one year, the two numbers happen to match, I think you might be looking for more of a cash flow, correct?
I think that's where I'm coming at, is you're covering the interest. You have not covered the principal. When does the principal get paid back?
Well, I think it's during loss. Bob was saying, in the out years, you will see where the numbers land.
Why don't we move to, I think if we have Anthony now do the surplus deficit in the executive summary, maybe that'll get a little more clarity?
Goodbye.
Okay, and then we can go back to asking the other questions. Okay, do people in the audience have this? Yes, okay. It's in the back of, we're back of the pie charts, the last two pages in the back of the pie. This is a new packet. Do people in the audience have this? No, they don't. Okay, I'll get it for you, it's here, we have plenty.
Can we ask a question?
No, not at this time, we're, it's a board meeting.
I'll take a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a, or can I ask a question?
No, you don't, sir, no. We have a new board meeting, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Anthony.
So, we put this together for discussion purposes this evening. And it's the same numbers that Bob just gave you. And we picked the twenty-year bond profile, again, based out of comments coming out of this morning's meeting. So, I'm not going to rehash what Bob just went through, but I'm going to draw your eyes down to a row that says surplus deficit, which would say surplus deficit, but. So, is, are we all there?
Yeah.
What are you looking at?
Third page in.
One of the pie charts.
Got it.
So, plus that. Got it, Greg?
Yeah, I've got it, yeah.
Okay. So, Greg, this is what you might be getting at as well. So, when you look at the surplus deficit line, it's just, how do we get to the bottom line? You know, we look at the revenue coming in, we know we have costs, we know that, you know, there's a netting to that, and we have to cover the debt, the bond, the loan for the labs. And so, the surplus deficit is a net of all that. So, if you just read along left to right, first year it's zero, the second year it's a hundred and seventeen thousand and change. The next year it's two hundred fifty-six, the fourth year it's one forty-seven. And then that's the spike that Bob was referring to before, of five fifty-seven. So, those are the construction years, right? Those are the early years in the project that obviously we have no revenue coming in or very little, or none in the first three years because we're building the school. So, that's the bond or the banding payments that you see in those first upfront years. And then in year five is when the bond really starts to kick in. Then in year six, you see that the surplus deficit becomes a positive number of thirty-two thousand, thirty-one and change. So, that, Greg, is your first year where the program is starting to generate enough cash to cover the debt with a little leftover. And then the next year it grows.
That's a good thing.
So, that's, if you look at the strain or, or the pressure that the program is putting on the budget, because this is, this doesn't mean that the net budget, back to Valerie's question from before, it doesn't mean that the net budget is going to increase in any particular year, right, because there are other bits and pieces of the budget, the primary school, the middle school, and everything else that go into the school's annual budget. So, we still won't know conclusively, you know, is this, for example, in year one or two, we're showing that we have to make a bond pay, or a band payment of a hundred and seventeen thousand, but if there's a corresponding reduction of a hundred and seventeen thousand someplace else in the school's budget, the net increase to the budget would be zero. That's the point that I just wanted to make. I'm not saying that it is, we haven't gotten there yet, but we have to think about, that's why we call it surplus deficit, not budget increase decrease. So then, that's the cash, that, that's, that's when the program is turning positive or negative, right, Greg? The cumulative pieces, your question is, as you start to turn positive and you start putting money, at what point does the bond get covered, and the program is truly into a net surplus position, which is different than what year are we cash flow positive versus when it's recovered?
Right. All right, well, let me ask you a question. I don't understand what happens in year twenty, or the years after year twenty. It looks like you've got four more years projected out here with no income and only costs, and I don't understand why there are bonding costs in years twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, I, I want Bob to provide the details, but the, I think what you're catching up to is the fact that it was a twenty-year bond, and the bond kicks in in year five, so it kind of pushes everything out. And what Bob hasn't done yet is to go back and, and extrapolate in years twenty-one, et cetera, to have coverable numbers. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me the, 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 the income should continue.
Yeah, it should, and he hasn't gotten there yet.
It will. It just, we, we stopped at a twenty, trying to come up with something of reason was twenty years, recognizing that there's a tail end, and this will continue up as we get students, and it wasn't, and it takes into account that we're staying with that two twenty-six total at each time.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but it seems to me that if, if the bond payments start in year five, continue on past year twenty, because they run for twenty years, so they start in five, they go out twenty-five from the beginning, then the income should be tracking out as well on that.
I think we, we agree.
We said it, it is gonna plug in.
Yeah, okay.
Remember, we, we were in a meeting this morning with three towns and their finance managers, and what you're seeing is an edit that came out of that meeting and helped facilitate this discussion, so Bob's got a homework assignment to go back in and continue working on everything.
Excellent.
And we do have to know.
We, we at first didn't wanna, we were expecting an answer to stretch this out for twenty years.
Okay.
We were looking at, looking at the ten, or perhaps the fifteen, the more logical way to do it. It would have ended by that point.
Right.
It's only because they came up with a twenty-year, and if they want thirty, we page four and five.
All right.
Well, it does make sense though, to at least take it out for twenty-five years instead of twenty, because, because we're on training wheels with seventy kids and then a hundred and forty while we're building, which I think is wishful thinking, because we don't really have completed facility for these kids to really buy into. And then you're hit over the head with a big payment right away, in other words, we're crippling ourselves. If there was a way that we can do twenty-five years to even out the payments, not thirty, but twenty-five makes sense. It'll likely, of course, be more expensive, but if you put in the, the whole ability, that's probably.
Anthony, do you wanna answer her?
Just one, you.
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, I'm trying.
Okay, go ahead.
You said in, in year four and seventy, we're still building facilities, I, I don't believe, I think we're done with the facility completed year three.
That's correct.
So, year four, we're up and running.
So, we're just trying to be as conservative as possible, planning on seventy, one forty.
Well, you can only, you can only bring in your ninth and tenth grade in your first year, right, and then each year you keep bringing in your new ninth grade, so that's, that's one of the reasons for the bill, and you have to, you have to generate a demand.
And our capacity is always gonna be two twenty-six, or that's just a conservative aim?
Conservative aim.
Two fifty total is what the bill, is the ed specs, right, so we're, we're below that, so quite definitely conservative.
Okay. I still think we should buy ourselves an insurance policy of twenty-five years.
Towns can ask for that, I mean, if Bob has the opportunity, if they look at that and present it to us, for, for the board to vote on how it should proceed ultimately. Guide, I can guide by the finance department.
Well, you know, we, one of the things on the agenda is to really get our message together for all of our upcoming town meetings, which are starting this week, on Saturday morning is the first one. So, I was very happy today for the board of finances selecting to say twenty years, so at least when we make presentations, we are going out with that information. I think Bob will agree with me on this, if not, please correct me. No decision really has to be made till after the referendum passes. I mean, you could say now twenty years, and you can decide to go to thirty years, or twenty-five, or fifteen, but in order to have a consistent message out there, and so that we present to every town in the exact same way, I think I'm comfortable at least with twenty at this point, getting all the numbers and our ducks in a row. And certainly, at the public hearing, if we felt, you know, compelled to change it, then at least at the public hearing, everybody would be hearing the same thing. But I think for my sanity, Kim's sanity, and everybody who's presenting, twenty years is what we're going to do moving forward, because we don't have time to go back and forth anymore.
Can I just ask quickly, when is the public hearing scheduled again?
October fifth.
October fifth.
And I have some dates after this discussion.
Peter?
I don't know where we are exactly, but my question, what's our break-even point regarding the number of students to make this a viable program? It's gotta be a break-even number.
There you go.
What is that?
That's what this is modeled around.
This is it.
More or less. If, if you look at a twenty-year bond.
Right.
It's, you're, you're, you're right in there, slightly positive figure, but.
Yeah, and that's, do you wanna go with that?
And that's what's delineated here.
Yes.
I just wanna make a comment, because Greg had said something before, I mean, we're talking about staffing, now we're talking about students, and the, the two twenty-six is including thirty-two, thirty-four, depending, students from in district, so it's really the one ninety-four, and then I think it goes to one ninety-six out of district. That's really the number that we're thinking about for the staffing and adding, adding those lobbies to the building, and also how many we're attracting to the program from outside. So, I don't want people to get confused and start thinking that that was two twenty-six from outside.
Right. Anything else?
No.
Um, I just have one question, and then I wanna do a little bit of marketing already, uh, marketing already, because, um, but, but my first quick question is, it is, I know we have custodial costs in here, but where, where are oats and veterinary expenses and purchasing the animals, is that, is that in here?
Yes, it is.
And which, which line is that?
It's, if you looked, it would be to, to, in the research.
Okay, you did it with the yellow.
Yeah, right after the yellow. The inside yellow.
Canary, thank you very much.
Okay, you see supplies, and it's about half, a little better than half down the page.
Custodial, let just be made sure.
Supplies, equipment, or stem training?
Right here.
Okay.
Equipment, stem training, okay, so supplies and equipment, that's all the feed and the animals.
That's for the academic portion. What's below that is to keep the operation going.
Custodial.
Stem training.
Stem training.
Right.
So, as I said, so in the supplies, equipment, and stem training, that's where the animals cost, the animal care cost, and the feed cost.
All those costs associated with the ed program, right.
Okay, good. All right, that said, I think, you know, everybody should look at these, you know, I, I, I went over this, um, over the weekend, and it takes a little bit of concentration. If you go over this, all of your questions are answered, except for the ones that I didn't ask now, and you can always ask Bob, or, or Anthony. Everything that you wonder, that you, that you wondered yourself, and that you've heard, people in your towns, or your family even asked about, is, thank heavens, in here. And there are supplemental, that we all have been handed out, and I'm sure these can all be put on the website, I mean, once, once we prove it. There are supplemental materials that explain where some of the calculations and considerations for population come from, and how those population considerations actually turn out to be conservative estimates of what you need in order to make this viable. And what Greg was driving at earlier is, is luckily clear in this latest handout, we were just going on the third page of this, shows you that you have a line that explains operating expenses, a line that explains debt financing, a line that explains the revenue. And that's the interesting thing about it that Bob also mentioned, is that very often when we go to taxpayers and ask them for money to spend on our school system, we're asking for, and there's never a revenue. The only good is the benefit, obviously, of having superbly educated children, having the, the facilities that they require for that. In this case, we're not only getting that, but we're also getting a situation where there's a revenue involved because of the state and the out-of-district students. And you don't often get a situation where you're asking a public to spend eleven and a half million dollars on something, and know that that will be recouped. And what Greg was driving at is not so much the actual recruitment of the bond, but if you look at it, by the time we get to year six, we're already gaining more revenue than our expenses. And even though that sounds like, oh, how, how can you imagine that? If you look at it, it's actually plotted out with a very conservative estimate, so that you're not imagining it based on, well, if all goes well, but really, at the bare minimum, you're going to end up with enough incoming revenue and enough of a depletion in your financing, that you're actually gonna, you know, it's not gonna be much, you're gonna make a whopping thirty-one thousand in, in the, the year six, but what, what does school do, does it ever talk about making any money? And that money, of course, ends up going into our, offsetting our budget, the other part that we're not talking about. And it's not as if that's, that's an elephant in the room, because we're always gonna have that budget, whether we do this or not. In fact, this strengthens the hope of having a school system to have a budget for if we do this, because we already know that the budget goes up somewhere between zero and five percent every year. So, you add that to this, obviously, all of a sudden you see that this is actually generating revenue that goes against that. Now, in the first five years, that's when we're gonna have some expenses, and that's what you see here. Right this very year, we are servicing our debt to the tune of very close to six hundred thousand dollars. Next year, if we, if we embark upon this, we're gonna be servicing that existing debt to about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And then we're gonna add the cost of the beginning of this project, a hundred and seventeen thousand, which is just about what we're doing this year, servicing in our budget six hundred thousand. The next year, it's a little bit more than that, it ends up being about seven hundred thousand. That's the one year. Two years from now, we're actually gonna have an impact on our overall budget for this project. Then in the year after that, once again, it's about five, six, that's back to about six hundred thousand again, which is what we're doing just this year in servicing debt. And then, the year after that, as you can see, this is all in here, year five, we're back to a little less than six hundred thousand we're servicing on debt. Once again, this is what we're used to, except for one year, two years from now, where we're gonna be paying seven hundred thousand, we're already paying six hundred thousand dollars of debt service in our budget. It will never go above that except for one year. And then, all of a sudden, by year six, there is no, what we're calling here, a, a additional deficit. In fact, it begins to be an offset against our deficit. We're obviously gonna be servicing debt for twenty years, but the revenues from these additional students coming into our system are offsetting that debt. And that, as I said, is what's remarkable about this, not only are we gonna be able to offer this to our students and the students of these other districts, but it's actually going to help us with what we've been dealing with for so long, is our naturally rising costs and our shrinking population. Now, we don't even need to go into theories about how this is going to help us stem the tide of our shrinking population due to the effects this will have on the quality of our, our school system, but at least that cost thing is now gonna be offset by this. And that's, that's one point. The other point is, and someone else may wanna talk about this now, or some other point, how we are, are able to be confident in the numbers that are based on the population, and, uh, Kim Gallo mentioned this issue when she spoke, that these numbers are very conservative. And if people are concerned about how these students are going to be brought into the system, are you sure? Are you trapping it at this beat? We're looking at it, our very first year, only twenty students from region twelve existing in this, only fifteen students from out of, out of, out of the district. So, what we're basing this nice-looking piece of, of, of financing on is also a very conservative, not, a non-pioneers-of-the-sky kind of thing. And then the final thing, and as I said, the reason I'm, I'm talking about this at such length, is because these are the concerns that I've been hearing from, from people in the various towns. Final thing is something that, that gentlemen brought up tonight, is what is the deal with us ending up within however many years a school system where we are serving more children from out of district than we are in our own district? Well, first of all, that only technically applies to this program, it will always be that way. And in fact, that's what not all does. They have a certain number of kids from their district, a greater number of kids from outside the district. But what it also does is that it enables us to continue serving our kids in this district, even if there are less of them. And that is our big issue that we're, we've been dealing with for the past number of years, is how can we make sure that we service these children and provide them with an excellent education in all the facilities and the academic variety and offerings that we can, even though there are fewer of them? Well, now we add to them, and therefore we can have that many more APV classes, because we're gonna have that many more kids we're servicing. So, for the kids in our, in our district, we shouldn't be so concerned that we're servicing fewer of them than we are out-of-district kids. We should be happy with the fact that we have out-of-district kids who are enabling us to provide a broader and deeper education to those kids in our district, which is, which is our responsibility. So, I'm, I'm sorry to talk so long, but it's, it's, this has been very exciting to go through the agony, believe the numbers, I'm looking at this over the weekend, and, and, and some of the questions I've heard tonight make me think that we, we need to share this agony a little more, because it really is, once you get this under your belt, you're gonna be very confident in what we're embarking on. And also that much better able to address members of the public, or the press, or anybody else has questions for you, so. Greg? I was gonna say that there, there are a couple of things that I'm heartened by. When, when you talk about the fact that we might have more out of, more out-of-district kids that we're educating, the other thing to remember is that once these kids are here, they're gonna be students of Chappa. You know, I don't think anyone has ever said that it is a bad idea for my company to go out and broaden the base of my, for my customer base. That's not a bad idea, that's a good idea. That level of diversification is good for the system. It allows us to offer a far more rigorous system and program than we ever would've been able to offer if we just stayed with ourselves. So, I'm heartened by that. The other thing I'm heartened by is the news that I heard in the last couple of days, that the enrollment measures for the towns of Bethel, Newtown, Brookfield, and Milford, all exceeded the enrollment projections that they expected. And so, when you see some growth like that across a broad swath of the spectrum, and don't forget Danbury is getting bigger and bigger all the time, when you see a growth like that, it gives us, it heartens me that we, I think these numbers are probably well-achievable. I, I, and the final thing on those numbers is the fact that, the thing that we talked a little about is that Danbury has created a, a phenomenal middle school, that's a science magnet school, and there is no follow place, there's no science-centered curriculum. Well, there is now. That science-centered curriculum is in Chappa for the, for when they, those kids graduate and go to high school. And so, now you've got a group of people who have never really been plumped, who have never really been recruited, who have never been put here, who are suddenly gonna be excited about science, and now they have an all-
who have never been put here, who are suddenly gonna be excited about science and now they have an alternative and a place to go to do it. So I think, and, and because that's a, discussed a district or a town with a stable and growing population. I think probably to be conservative, we would say it's at least stable. Whereas others are declining, it is stable for the foreseeable future. And right now, it's, it's the end of a growth, a really large growth spurt. So I, I think that when we see that, it gives me comfort that the numbers that are in here are achievable. And in fact, I hope that our, our biggest problem is what are we gonna do when we exceed those numbers? Uh, we're gonna, I think we've built enough programming for it, but um, you know, that, that I think would be a good problem to have anyway.
Valerie.
Well, just a footnote to what you said, don't forget that that population increases in those communities, specifically Danbury. Our immigrant populations, which are wonderful and fine, but have their own special staffing needs. A lot of times more ESL is required. So I wouldn't take that broadly. I think it's good that we're getting more population in general, we can help lots of kids. But I don't think that says too much about what might be our catchment area in this particular program. But let's hope. And the other thing, this is just an incredible wealth of information. And I hate to burden people more, but if it could be just, I mean, Greg brought up just doing the numerical count of page sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. If there is a way that, because now we want all this great information to go out broadly, so that we remember our audience. And yes, the detail is always here for anyone to examine it thoroughly, but it would be good if this was edited in a way that there are broader strokes, slightly broader strokes. That'd be wonderful. It's great work.
Peter.
I'll try and consolidate the issue. It's very simple. It's busing in versus busing out. You want to bus students in, save the system? Or are you willing to bus out the students who are here to other systems instead of busing students in, save the system? That is the issue. There is no other issue. Will the public support busing in as compared to busing everybody out, which would be extremely difficult for the middle school? So that's the issue that you must decide on as members of the public. And that's the issue for the public, the board to present to the public. We'd like to keep the students in the school system rather than busing them out to other school systems because the towns will benefit and the students will benefit in the long. If the public doesn't support this issue, eventually we'll be forced to bus students out.
Do we need action on this? Do we need to vote to confirm this is out forward?
So anything further in your report?
The only thing that I have to do is I need to go over some dates. Okay. So we have information, I don't know if we need more detailed information about the population. I guess if you do, we can just talk about it next week, maybe if no one has questions on it. Uh, but I, what I just wanted to do, there are some, I know we've been on um Google Docs, there's the calendar of events. And we really need some um board members to step up for these events especially. Wednesday night, I cannot make the Lions Club with Kim. Yeah, but we really need a board member, if somebody can go Wednesday night, you'll go?
Yeah, I've, I've already signed up for a bunch of them, but I'll go back.
Okay, and you get free dinner. There you go, okay. So Greg, okay, that's good. So if you, okay, so you'll let, it's Greg. Decines. I'm not going, Kim is de-kines.
Well, it's Greg.
I will be de-kines. Greg.
No, you're, you're gonna be fine.
He'll be fine. They're very, they're very nice. You've been there many times, so I think they should hear from other people.
They're a hard drinking bunch though, so just be aware.
And Jen, if you want to go, you'll let us know.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that, uh, we have, I think we're good Saturday. I have Alan's gonna be there, Rebecca's gonna be there and I'm gonna be there. So that's Saturday morning, ten AM at Burnham.
At Burnham.
At Burnham School. So I think we're good there. The Roxbury meeting is September twenty-second at seven PM.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Greg, okay? Uh, anybody else can come, certainly. So that's Greg, Pat and Kim. Um, the ten-three is the Washington Town Hall meeting, that's at nine-thirty AM. So many people there?
Be there.
Okay, Jim? Uh, nine-thirty AM, it's a Saturday, Jim and Jen, okay? And Pete, thank you. Well, I was gonna go there and then go to the farmer's market. We're gonna do both. Okay, so that's fine. We have enough people to be at the farmer's market. Yeah, we'll figure it out. And then the public hearing is October fifth. Um, that's where we'll do it in the auditorium. We will have the long dais, we will have bond council, Charlie Boo's, the attorneys, all of those um things. Um, what we will also do is at the next meeting, which is next week, I'm gonna have Bob bring a draft of the question, just so you can see what we're looking towards. Hopefully at that point, we'll also have um, I will get the um, we have, we have a meeting next week. We have the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth and October fifth, three Mondays in a row. Okay? Um, so this way you can at least get a handle on what we're looking at. Um, we'll also, hopefully, we keep checking every day about the minutes for the board meeting at the state. They're not there yet. Um, I am confident, after speaking to our attorney, the state's attorney, um, that we are, we do not need a majority vote in each town.
When you say that's their opinion?
That's their opinion.
That's what they told you?
Yes, that's what they have told me. And I am confident of that, but certainly, as you said before, but I just, we'll have that information for you next week. We're waiting for things in writing so that you'll have that. Um, and that's where we are right now. So.
I have a question for you.
Yes. It's, it starts at six fifteen and that's when they go downstairs.
Just a refreshments.
People's addresses for all of these things, that's what you have.
Sure. Yeah, it's right, um. I'll, I'll send it to you. And then dinner starts usually about ten to seven. Kim is first going to Burnham School for the open house and then she'll shoot over. Double duty Wednesday night. Town Hall.
Yes, Michelle.
Uh, I just wanted to add, um, in the same vein, we were at, uh, General, the Washington Farmer's Market this weekend and we got some suggestions. And one was um that for the presentation, that we are able to show the video.
Yes.
So.
We have it.
Okay, that'd be great. And then when we are out at the farmer's market, I was thinking if we could have it on the, on the laptop. I don't know, could you do that on a Chromebook? That would be good. Um, so we could have the video with us. Another suggestion that we got was that uh the peo, the people that we spoke to at the farmer's market thought it was great that we were there and we just said, why are you not at the Roxbury Market? Why are you not at the Bridgewater? So I, you know, that would require the board to staff those, but um we might just want to think about expanding and be more people.
Farmer's markets.
I could also just say, I'm sorry, uh, I had a meeting this week with the district PTO and they have started to mobilize. And they know that after October fifth, um, when we can no longer advocate, that they need to pick up the, um, some of the slack. So.
We cannot expend public funds there.
Right, thank you.
We can advocate, we can't expend that.
We can inform, that's what we can do.
No, we can advocate. What we, we can't do is spend public funds to do it. When I go to a meeting and advocate.
Send out a piece of card that has the word hand in.
Right, but when I go to a meeting to advocate, that's not the expenditure of public funds. Unless the public reimbursing for my farmers or not, so uh, no funds there.
Anyway, the PTO is gonna mobilize, so I think they, they, they have a, they have a handle on that.
I, I just, I'm just curious, maybe, maybe there's no answer, we've talked about this multiple times, but why is it that, that nobody has brought up this section ten sixty-four? Which should have laid all this duress a long time ago. And I mentioned in an email in, in June, and somehow our attorneys and the state's attorneys, everybody seems to have missed it. And we still have a, a back and forth and hopefully we'll have finality on, on what plurality is needed for the vote. But it just seems so cut and dry. I just don't understand why we didn't cut to the chase. I sent an email in, in um July about it. And basically it says, it's the statute that says establishment of regional agricultural science and technology education centers. Any local or regional board of education may enter into agreement with other such boards of education to establish a regional agricultural science and technology education center in conjunction with the regular public school system. Blah, 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 blah. So basically, it's just a board decision, which would be the quick answer to all this.
Right.
We've been going through all this.
Well, we have to approve the bond.
But that's ten fifty-six afterwards.
Yes.
But the whole question we have is usually our plurality of voting and where the majorities happen have to do with the decision to, to make a, uh, change. Make a change.
Fundamental change.
Fundamental change. But inasmuch as ten forty-seven C does stipulate what are fundamental changes, that also stipulates certain things that are, one would think are fundamental, that aren't covered by ten forty-seven C. And along those lines, ten sixty-four pretty much yanks agricultural science, agricultural uh, uh, schools out of any ten forty-seven C activity.
Well, we haven't seen the bonding question, but it may not be that we're asking the public to approve the creation of the disarrest and to approve the funding.
Right.
To establish.
But funding is always majority within all of the towns.
And that's, that's the recommendation for our town.
We have decided to do this, we'd like to support us.
Right.
Right.
And that's the thing, is, is the ten sixty-four gives us the ability to decide to do this without having to go to the towns to make the decision for us. We just have to vote on the funding for it.
That's exactly right.
Unlike the other issue, which had to be a decision made by plurality, because it was a decision to do something.
Exactly right.
But I don't understand why we shouldn't have been over this months ago.
Uh, because the state accidentally put in the first consideration that each town, that's where the question came from. They made that mistake. State Board of Education, in what, the first consideration, they wrote a majority of each town. And that's why people got confused.
So they, they did that all by themselves, no influence?
Yes.
It wasn't questioned, that's how they answered it, they just made that proposition?
Because they rushed a special meeting.
Don't speak for them, we don't know.
Well, that's what I've been told.
Okay, all right. Whatever, well, whatever.
There's also one thing to mention too, that when Michelle and I were at the farmer's market, the only thing that I think would be a really helpful tool would be to have something to pass out because what we were finding was, was people were saying, okay, so what, what do you need, what do we need to do? And I know, but I'm talking about having a, something to pass out that says the date of which the referendum is and also absentee ballot, something that, because everybody, the weekenders and the people who live in the community but not full-time also wanted to know what they and where they needed to go. And so I think if we had just a, something that we could just say the date and something that we could pass out, I think that would be great.
Agree, we can't pass out the date until the board sets the date of the public hearing.
Well, even if we can just say something about when.
Right, the public hearing we can do now so that people know.
We'll probably remember.
Even just something about that when.
I hear you.
I know.
Try and so you know.
I know, thank you.
Michelle.
I'm wondering when um we will be looking at the wording of the question? Because that is something that um concerns me a lot.
Next week.
Okay, good.
See, it's already drafted and we're in the process of just going through it, making sure everything works.
But this question's. Is it in conjunction with our bond council?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's been drafted since July, actually, impending what we needed to make the final numbers, so it's like.
All right, anything else? Is there anything else?
No, there isn't.
Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah.